For all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please remember to silence your phones, pagers, and other devices. And add any citizen concerns. I have not heard that he has called in or wanted to. Thank you. Hearing no citizen concerns, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by Potabon to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes four to zero. Items three through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the August 7, 2018 meeting. Four is approval of claims. Five, board administration.
I bring up something on item five here. Can I get a microphone?
Reading that, it didn't put anything about the option to bid again when this comes up. Are we gonna lease this out again?
That's up to the board.
Okay. Could we add something like, there's a potential to lease this property again when it comes up? So just, because otherwise it just sounds like a mean divorce.
Well, that'd be a separate item, wouldn't it?
No, you just asked for that line to be on the letter, would you not?
Is this the property that Prairie Hill is sitting on as we speak?
Yes.
Is it? Okay.
Is anyone opposed to adding that kind of language to the letter?
That we have the option to renew it?
No, that he can bid on it again when it's time for this to be bid out again. Because we bid it, what, every three years, or?
I think it's a three-year contract.
Yeah, it's really up to the board. We've done three years the last few times. I did get an email from someone with Pearson Farms. And they were asking about when the bidding process would occur and asked to be notified when that goes out. So I think I copied Karen in on that, so.
So then just maybe say you'll be notified when the bidding process starts again.
Or just terminate it when we put it out and make sure we notify everybody. Because it has to be public bid anyway.
Right.
Well, yeah, the termination has to be by September 1st. So that's why it's on the agenda today. But adding something like Keith is asking for it doesn't hurt anything.
While you guys are on the subject, I would just add that Field did a phone call earlier this year about the county farm agreement. And nearby property owner wanted to know if the board would entertain language in the agreement that would make it a condition that it be row cropped and not to persilage just because of the dust that it stirred up. So I just feel obliged to make that comment.
That would come out when then we go to bid it out again. But at this point, I just, I don't.
Well, if I was gonna recommend anything, I would say that we do it on a year-by-year basis and not a three-year.
Well, and that's not pertaining to this, but.
Well, on that particular item, I would rather go on a year-by-year.
Or at least by annual?
I would prefer to do year-by-year, but I, at the same time, I don't see any I don't see any resistance to adding that language nor leaving it as-is because it'll come up again in the near future anyway, so.
I think the benefit to going multi-years is that you don't get one farmer that rents it for corn. And then the next year, somebody wants to rent it for corn again, they should rotate crops to some extent.
I would rather leave our options open with Prairie Hills personally.
Sure.
With what we may or may not do out there at some point in the future.
But it's like 120 acres or something, close to 100?
It's around 200, I think.
200.
208 or something like that.
Okay. Oh, we need 208 acres of options.
Well, the parcel itself that Prairie Hill sits on is not part of the.
The rental, yeah, so it's only about three acres that that sits on.
Yeah.
But that's another meeting, I guess.
So we'll leave it as is? Anybody?
Well, I guess I'm just trying to figure out what we're gonna put in the minutes. Right now, it's just a notice to terminate, and that's a regular occurrence, right? Yeah.
I was thinking the language of the termination letter is mostly like, okay, well, we're done with this.
Yeah, but it's understood every time.
It's standard practice.
Right, yeah.
And they've been through it.
Maybe it's a little friendly.
He's probably done it before.
There's an invitation to bid in the future.
He's been through it a bit a couple of times.
Sure.
Sure, are you opposed to leaving it as is?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, anybody else? Number five, board administration, approval of notice to terminate farm tenancy. Item six, A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorization to initiate hiring process. C, approval of retiree request to remain on county health insurance plan. Item seven, secondary roads, consideration of permit to work in the county right-of-way. I will move to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Radig to approve consent agenda. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes four to zero. And since we are, item eight.
I'll be right back with the.
You forgot the results, huh?
Didn't do your homework?
There was, eight people voted, it was five to three, and passed for the Odo special election.
Was there any meddling?
No. There were no Russians spotted within.
The voting booth didn't get hacked.
Valid question. I think he's got his microphone on, so I hope he doesn't go to the restroom.
He's smarter than that.
See what kind of shape he's in if he starts reading.
It's gonna take a while. Well, I can, we can sign things here.
Here he is. Now we can canvass the election.
All right.
Hello?
Who's there? Is Jeremy here? Is that what we're asking?
Melissa, does this mean I'm not to sign these yet?
Hello?
There's no signatures on these yet. Thank you.
Didn't know we had a keyboard over there.
I want to sign these, and then we'll send them over to the department.
Okay.
All right, are we on the canvas?
Yep, yes, we are.
Okay. Report the results of the city of Odo Special Election, which was to change the purpose of the local option sales tax. It passed, there were eight total voters, five in favor, and three opposed. You need a motion to receive.
So moves.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Radig to receive the Odo Special Election. Canvas?
Yep. Just need to sign those.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a fifth or not? All those opposed say nay. Passes four to zero. We are not at the set time. Mark, would you like to start with secondary roads, item 10?
We could do the United Way thing, that's not a set time, right?
Either way. Item nine, United Way of Sioux Land Employee Contribution Campaign.
David Gleiser, Community Economic Development Director, asking the board to allocate $1,000 out of gaming revenue for a budget to develop and implement the United Way Employee Contributions Campaign. It's an annual fundraiser for the United Way, which of course, you know, supports a number of nonprofit organizations throughout Sioux Land in the areas of education, income, and health initiatives. Last year, Woodbury County employees raised $21,459 in total. And our goal this year is to increase that by 10%.
So the $1,000 is needed for what part?
We use it for refreshments, for department meetings with United Way staff. We use it for, to, in the past, we've done purchased items that we do for a raffle. So it's incentives, so we'll work with different retail stores in the community. Get donations, we'll buy items. And then based on your contribution, you get a certain number of raffle tickets, and then your name goes into a raffle. The board is also in years past giving, have given two PTO days. And we've split that up, you know, like two four-hour PTO certificates or however, one eight-hour, two four-hours, so.
I'd move approval of $1,000 coming from gaming.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I know it's not a lot of money, but I'm gonna vote against it.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Potabon to approve $1,000 coming from gaming. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes three to one with Mr. Radig voting against. Who we got? He's got to stay with this pile?
More people have to sign it.
All right. We're too early for a set time, are we not, Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Come on up, Mark, we'll get one of them out of the way, maybe. Item 10.
Let's see the agenda and see which one can do quickest.
You tell me.
Consider approval of contract and bond for 2018.
There you go.
That's in order, too.
That actually works.
Okay.
We have contract and bond returned to the county for our pavement marking project for 2018. Total bid price was $81,525. The contract is with Iowa Plains signing of Slater Iowa. I recommend approval.
I'll move it. I will second the motion by Mr. Radig. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes four to zero.
He went too fast.
How many minutes do I have to fill?
You got about two.
You wanna go down to D and?
Receive and consider bids for calcium.
Yeah, they just get worse for the amount of time they're going to take, so.
We're really close now. It's 4:45 on my electronic device.
If that works, I'll step aside and let you do your subdivision.
Okay.
I know the room is full of people for that hearing, but.
We are at 4:45. Mr. Gleiser, public hearing and final plat for Meyer Edition, a minor subdivision.
The Meyers are proposing to subdivide 15.7 acres into three lots. It's AP Act preservation, and it's located in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 19, Township 87, and Range 44. All of the uses of the current proposed structure of the property are allowed under the zoning ordinance. And all property owners within 1,000 feet were notified of the public hearing. All pertinent county departments, utility and regulatory agencies were also notified and asked to provide comment. As of last week, no comments have been received, other than that provided by the county engineer, which is, his comments are in your supporting material. And it's a pretty straightforward subdivision. There's a road that runs through the parcel. They're gonna use the north part of that above the road as a parcel, and then they're gonna split the bottom, too, so. Staff recommendations to receive the zoning commission's recommendation and approve the resolution accepting and approving the final plat.
I'll move to receive.
I will second the motion by Mr. Radig. Do we need to open and close the public hearing at this point, Mr. Gill?
You should have closed the public hearing.
All right, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Then I will second closing the public hearing.
I think now you can, motion to receive.
Well, you gotta vote.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes four to zero.
The motion to receive is still standing, we should give a vote on that.
Is it?
You're in order for a motion to receive.
Okay.
Mr. Radig, you made that.
I'll move to receive it, too.
I will second the motion by Mr. Radig to receive. Any further questions? And you said the staff recommends?
Yes.
Approval? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Oh, we still need to approve, though, right? There are two motions. Move to receive.
One to close and another one?
And the other one was to approve the plat?
Yes.
Yes, I'll move to approve the plat.
What was the other one?
We moved to receive the.
See the zoning commission's recommendation? Oh, okay, all right.
I will second the motion by Radig to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. We have another four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Gleiser. Should we go down the line there, Mr. Nara, then? We'll start with 10B, receiving considered bids for propane and heating county buildings for FY 2019?
I passed around bid tabulations for.
Hi, this is Pat Gill.
Hi, Pat, Jeremy, can you hear me?
Can you folks hear Jeremy now?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Our first bid is from New Cooperative of Fort Dodge, Iowa. They bid $1.08 per gallon, $108 per gallon. This is for the needs of Sheriff's Department Emergency Services, Treasurer's Office, secondary roads, and conservation for the winter. The second quote is from Johnson Propane and Heating. They bid $1 per gallon. I recommend award of the quotations for propane to Johnson Propane of Battle Creek, Iowa.
I'll move to approve. The recommendation from the engineer?
I will second the motion by Mr. Radig. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Our next quotation is for trucks.
Semi-tractor truck.
Bid tabs for them as well.
Yeah, it's on the back of our paperwork.
That's funny.
The first quote is from Peterbilt of Sioux City. Total purchase price, no trade, $120,760. 120760. They use that as purchase price as well. Trade-in on our current Volvo truck, $3,500. Net purchase price with trade, $117,260. 117260. Next bid is from Boyer Ford Truck Sales of Sioux Falls. Purchase price, no trade, $106,800. 106800. Same for the purchase price. Trade-in value for the current Volvo truck, $8,500. Net purchase price with trade, $98,300. Next bid is from Reeves Mack Sales and Services. They're out of Alotten. Purchase price, no trade, $121,879.54. Purchase price, $121,879.54. Less trade-in on the Volvo truck, $5,000. Net purchase price with trade, $116,879.54. Next is Sioux City Truck and Trailer. Purchase price, no trade, $129,878. Same as purchase price. Trade-in value of our current truck, $6,000. Net purchase price with trade, $123,878. Next bid is from I State Truck Center of Sioux City. Purchase price with, purchase price is $109,759. Less $3,000 for the current Volvo truck. Net purchase price with trade, $106,759. Cornhusker International is the final quote. Purchase price, with or without trade, $112,508.53. Trade-in value on the current Volvo, $3,000. Net purchase price with trade, $109,508.53. I would request the bids be returned to my department so that we can review them and make a recommendation for award.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Potabon, second by Mr. Radig to receive the quotes and allow the county engineer to examine the quotes. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Our next item is bids for calcium chloride for 2019. I think I already passed around the tab sheet for that. First one is from Farmers Feed and Supply Incorporated of Boyton, Iowa. They're bidding $518 per ton. Total bid, $79,772. Next bid is from Jericho Services. Jericho is out of Indianola, Iowa. They bid $430 per ton. Total, $66,220. Final quote is from Scottwood Industries of Overland Park, Kansas. They bid $359.60 for a total bid of $55,378.40.
Is that delivered?
Yes. It's nice to have Scottwood bidding. They've missed us the last couple of years, so. They generally be recovers, so. For whatever reason, they're very competitive. I recommend award of the calcium chloride bid for 2019 to Scottwood Industries for $359.16 per ton.
I'll move it.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt to receive and award bids for, what'd you say that was?
Scottwood.
Scottwood Industries.
Scottwood Industries? Further comments or questions?
Safe to say they assaulted that bid, is that right?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
The next item we have for board consideration today is a relatively new program. Just so you don't have to crane your heads, I'll give you a paper copy. Putting the other one up for the benefit of those in the gallery.
Yeah, Mark, you have a, you have a bright incentive program on the, actually, no, that's the board office.
I don't know how that one...
Can I share with you?
Sure.
Apparently he didn't want to give me one.
All the brightly colored...
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll share one.
Crossroad Bride Incentive Program, the...
Bridge.
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 Not brides.
Yeah, we're not giving away brides, so.
But it says on here.
In this day and age, that would get us...
That'd be front page, wouldn't it, Brett?
Now, for the record, on my sheet, it shows bridge, so.
Karen.
I thought maybe it was like a population kind of thing, you know, we're trying to increase our population, so.
This is a G-rated, this is G-rated YouTube show.
Within the next...
Get him in a rope.
To get to, to the gist of this program, within the next two to three years, as you know, we've replaced, the overpass at Port Neal Road was raised probably eight to 10 years ago. The, uh, overpass at, uh, uh, Port Neal Interchange, mile point one thirty-five, was raised when it was replaced with a new structure, as was the one at Salix. The next two bridges down the line, which cross Carroll Avenue, 290th Street, and 310th Street, both are still within what DOT considers an inadequate vertical clearance over the interstate. To address those bridges, they have proposed projects in their five-year program to raise these bridges by about two feet each, so that they meet that minimum sixteen-foot overpass between the, uh, top of pavement and, uh, the bottom of the low superstructure. Um, I, as the board might have heard, last week, we had a house pass under there and leave part of its, uh, top on the interstate. Uh, but it illustrates that as they've gradually gotten rid of each bridge, the next bridge down the line is getting hit. A number of these bridges in Monona and Harrison County have already been raised. Uh, these are two of the last ones for DOT consideration. DOT has recently come up with a program that offers a cash incentive to the county for consideration of removing these structures altogether, so that, you know, should someday eighteen-foot be their new mark, they won't have any vertical obstruction out there on the interstate. They're offering roughly the cost of either raising or replacing those structures, which is about one and a half million dollars per bridge for the county to use for any bridge needs within the county. In replacement of the dollars that they would have used to raise these two overpasses. Potentially, that would be three million dollars to the county that we could use on whatever bridges are within our system that are in need of money for replacement. And, uh, you all know our bridge situation out there. We have, uh, roughly seventy-one bridges that are, uh, structurally deficient or functionally obsolete, rated less than fifty sufficiency rating, and have less than five years of estimated remaining life. We only have about thirty-eight of those programmed right now. So we have thirty-four bridges with no identifiable source of funding in the five-year program. This money, uh, at three million dollars, would provide enough for seven average-sized bridges. But, uh, it would create issues for some of the property owners down there. The properties that I handed out on the map and that are, that are thrown up on the bulletin board, they're shown in red, are properties that have ownership on both sides of Interstate 29. Um, we have four ways to cross 29 in this area. There's 275th Street, which is at the top of the picture. Uh, that is the one going into Salix. Poplar Street, Salix, we call it County Route K-25. Carroll Avenue, which is the 290th Street and Carroll Avenue Bridge. 310th Street is County Road D-65 currently. Uh, it is a foreign-to-market route across there. And then we also have 330th Street, which is Highway 141 to the east, and the Winnebagoes Road going to the west. That is probably one of the most heavily trafficked roads that we have in the county. At, uh, I think last count was over two thousand vehicles per day, and with the Winnebagoes Casino back there, it's not a surprise, it's a major traffic draw. This program is being offered to us by DOT. It's been approved on I-80. Our district engineer would ask for it on I-29 as well, if the county is interested in doing so. But as you can see, there's quite a bit of land tangled on both sides of the interstate where property owners own on both sides of the road. We would then be forcing farm traffic either south to 330th Street, Winnebagoes Road, Old Highway 141, whichever you want to call it, or up to Salix, if both of them are closed. Um, you can see we have a little more land involved in the south part. That road also is slightly more centrally located for, for traffic. Um, this is not something that our department feels strongly about removing. We think there's a transportation need for these structures out there. They currently rank around eighty to a hundred vehicles per day. I should have looked at that count today, but that, that's about where both of these roadways lie. But during harvest, they become pretty important, um, for getting equipment to and from. Um, I know, uh, a few years ago, we, uh, we kind of got crossways with one of our landowners down there because he was utilizing gravel roads in these overpasses to get, uh, his irrigation derricks up, up the road. Unfortunately, he was pulling signs as he went, which is where we got crossways with him. But again, it, it shows that there is a need for these, and some of these wide, heavy, and otherwise, uh, slow-moving loads, uh, to traverse the interstate area. These would be something where eventually you would have to have a road closure and vacation process to close them. But I think even before you would go to that stage, we'd want to have some public involvement and discussion of whether or not we should even consider going that far. Again, from the road department's perspective, we feel these still serve a, a transportation necessity. Personally, I would rather see them raised and, uh, maintained in place. Uh, because again, you can see how much land is involved on, on both sides of the interstate that has, uh, the joint ownership. Gradually, that might devolve where, uh, you know, the land would be eaten up by people on the west side or eaten up by people on the east side and, uh... But land ownership changes come very slowly, i- is the thing that we found. You're not land lock- locking or isolating anybody with this, but you are creating some significant out-of-distance travel when we have this. I think it is worth having the discussion and reviewing our road system to see what the best option for our, our county landowners is, and, uh, to review their transportation needs. But, uh, I, I guess I'm looking for some, I, I'm looking to provide the board some information and see if, if there's any suggestions or direction on, uh, which way we ought to consider going on this, or if the board has any questions that I can try to answer.
So if we just say, "Now go ahead," they will raise those two bridges?
They are in the program. Plans are already under preparation. This program has something that was offered, I think it was offered in 2018 for the first time. And some counties are taking advantage of it, but some of them might have more system redundancy than we do. When the interstate was first built, the county agreed to quite a few roads being cut off, as you all know.
If, if we said, "Yeah, we'll take this and close them," then we have to tear them down, too?
No, the state would tear them down.
Oh, they would, okay.
These are state bridges.
Yeah, I know.
So instead of...
I thought once they gave us the money, they were washing their hands.
No, uh, they're, they're washing their hands, but it'll, it'll involve removal of the bridges. With these being over the interstate, uh, they are theirs to remove.
That's kind of a tough call, you know, you got maybe twenty landowners total or so, and...
And...
This mix and three million bucks, but at the same time, uh...
Full disclosure, one of those is a state of Iowa.
A new bridge study would probably cost, you know, half of that, if you ever wanted to put a bridge back in.
Uh, if we were even able to.
Right. So.
Look at the effort we're having to do with...
I know. So it's almost like, why ever get rid of one if it's gonna be that big of a pain to ever get one back?
The Port Neal Interchange started out as an overpass. It became an interchange after industries located in that area because, uh, uh, it was, it was an overpass like these two before it became, before it had ramps. It was, I think the ramps, it was built in 64, I think the ramps were added in 74.
I mean, I think about it as a future investment. Probably not a good, long-term strategy. It'd definitely be nice to have that money now, but...
Well, bridges aren't getting any cheaper. A four hundred thousand dollar bridge today by, in ten years, will probably be a half a million dollar bridge.
Right.
I agree that, uh, construction costs are going up.
Well, where do you want to start with this, Mark? Do you want to give some public input, or what do you want to do?
Well, I, I, if the board wants to at least throw it out there for the public to consider, I'd say that's what we should do next, is to, uh, get out word that we're going to be having a public hearing and, uh, allow folks in that area to, uh, find out about this program and see if they'd like to participate. I guess, you know, our effort would be, uh, press releases, um, if we get some help from the media and radio stations to get the word out there that we'd be having this discussion, then post handbills in city halls and, uh, convenience stores, banks, you know, people, places where people are, letting them know when this is. I guess my thought would be, uh, with, uh, the chair's direction, I'd set up, uh, time for a public hearing and get that publication information out there to them. I know we have the, we have to have it in the official newspapers, not more than four nor less than twenty days, so. We, we try and cast a wider net than that, of course.
Well, then I would direct you to...
Cast the net.
Cast the net, give something started there, please.
Will do.
The next one is what, F?
I believe my next item is a, uh, uh, consider approval of a project agreement addendum for project number IMN-296-Paren-170. This is the project by which, uh, the Department of Transportation is providing funds to participate with the, uh, IJR project. As we discussed at a prior meeting, and as our members who are on the, uh, IJR Stakeholders Committee know, uh, the consultant has, uh, informed us that to complete the study work with all the environmental work necessary, they need the full contract, uh, price for the IJR report authorized by the board. That would be, uh, six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for, six hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. That'll be the next item on the agenda. We have heard back from all of our project partners, although I didn't bother to contact Salix, their share of this extra cost would be right around a hundred dollars. So, but we do have, uh, the Sioux Land Initiative, Sioux City, Sergeant Bluff. And with this agreement, the I- Iowa DOT have agreed to fund at their full cost share beyond six hundred thousand dollars. So this, uh, raises the DOT's share of the study from two hundred thousand dollars to two hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred twenty dollars pending the board approval, so. All of our project partners were wanting to pursue this study to completion, and all, again, with the exception of Salix, who hasn't even had a chance to come to play yet, have enthusiastically authorized the funding to go to the full six forty-eight, four oh nine. I recommend approval of the DOT agreement.
Any other questions for Mr. Nara?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
A motion by Radig, second by Potabam. Any other board discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero.
This also requires the signature of the, uh, author to attest the board action. Then my final item on the agenda is the, uh, addendum or amendment to the Agreement for Professional Consulting Services, authorizing the, uh, increase of a hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars to finish the, uh, Phase D of the IJR study. Uh, this is directing McClure Engineering to do the work to complete the study. I recommend approval. I'll move it.
Motion by Radig.
Second.
Second by Potabam. Any further questions?
How many more phases are there?
Um, there's five phases, A, B, C, and D. The board authorized fully A, B, C, and E, and then we've been stepping through Phase D. There had been attempts to negotiate some of the, some, uh, lowered prices with a narrower scope of work, but we ended up with some additional detail on the reports that has still driven the cost of the, uh, original contracted amount, so. And we've been taking it through gradually, assuring that, uh, the, uh, results and information developed were in line with the needs of the completion.
Were there questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero.
So, before you go, Mark, can we jump back to E real quick? What are you talking, the cost to, uh, get that information out there and get the input?
Oh, um, it would be a matter of the board of supervisors holding the public hearings. Uh, we produce those handbills and postings. We send one of our inspectors around, they put them up on the bulletin boards in the, in the businesses. Uh, to get it in our three newspapers of general publication for a public hearing notice, about a hundred, a hundred and twenty dollars.
And then the staff time would be about what?
Staff time for, uh, prepping for the meeting is, is pretty minimal.
But like getting all those handbills out there is...
Well, we aren't gonna get handbills to every resident in that area. We're going to try and put them in places where these people are doing business. We weren't proposing to send something to every landowner in that area. That would be a significant commitment of time and resources. It's our hope that just, um, putting the information out through the media, television, radio stations, newspapers, and hopefully getting some, uh, press on it, that we get an adequate response. I mean, neighbors talk to neighbors. We, uh...
Sure.
You saw how large a group we can turn out for a, a drainage district. We should be able to turn out a significant group of interested people for this, too.
I, I just can't, uh, think that maybe we'd be wasting time and money doing that because, at the end of the day, I don't know that we'd want to close those bridges when you've got, for these, if there's a twenty thousand-foot, you know, roundabout way, if you're in the middle, it's gonna be, you're talking like thirty thousand or more feet to get around. And when we looked at that little Mowville Bridge, that was a million bucks, uh, you know, that one was only three thousand feet to go around. And I just, I mean, if we went out there and toured the site, and I, I just don't think we as a board would support not putting those bridges back in.
Well, I don't think public input's ever a bad thing. Personally, I would be one for just leaving them there and letting them raise them. But if the people out there that are directly involved came in and says, "No, fix another bridge somewhere else," I, my mind can be changed. So I don't, I don't mind getting the public input, it isn't that much work to do that. Never heard staffs of public what they think.
Sure.
I've already asked him to start it, so.
Okay.
So I didn't object to it.
File that general direction of the chair, so. I'll probably be shooting for sometime mid-September, I suppose.
Okay.
But hopefully I'll get it far enough ahead of harvest to...
I was going to say, don't do it right in the middle of harvest. Be one way to cut down on the public input.
Yeah, and we'll probably be looking at that second, second or third week of September, just to give us enough time to get, uh, public notices published and get as much information as we can. Hopefully, we'll get some good media coverage to help highlight this as well.
Thank you.
It's all on you now.
Okay. Reports on committee meetings. Anybody? I was at a tri-state disaster committee meeting today before, at 1:30. One of the things coming up is a class, uh, a lecture, if you will, on continuity of op... Start over. Continuity of operations or continuity of government. I was wondering if, uh, Business Community Workshop, that's the word I was looking for. Do you, anybody see any benefit to anyone or a few of us or other elected people going to something like that?
Where would that be?
I think it was in Sioux City here. I got to get back with Rebecca Socknott on that, but I, I think it was pretty close, close by. Maybe it was Dakota City, but it was not a day's drive or anything. Any thoughts?
What's, I don't know, what's the...
I, it's in case of a, some sort of national emergency type of setup and, uh, or, you know, EMP, loss of power for extended periods of time. Just how would we go about maintaining government operations? I suppose law enforcement would or should be involved in that, too, but...
Well, Dave would probably be going, or Gary Brown, or any of those, or...
Uh, any or all the above. It was a, Mr. Nara?
Just one thing to offer, I was on a committee that started work on this back in 2010, 2011. So there is some background work that ought to be somewhere in the files that the county had done to look at continuity of its operations. If, for instance, there was a flood that knocked the courthouse out of action on, you know, about the size of the '52 flood. There had been some work done. Do you remember that, Pat? Yeah, it, it, it's one of those efforts that kind of died, though, in between.
Yeah, I was going by who was at the meeting, and that was Emergency Services and Salvation Army and others affected of...
I, I think it really came out of the 2008 flood that hit Cedar Rapids and knocked out City Hall and the county office building and the county administrative building. The courthouses were both down.
And the library.
Pardon?
And the library, was it?
Yeah, well, there's, a lot of the downtown was underwater. And it was shortly after that that some of these efforts kind of started, but they, they died for a lack of enthusiasm and a change in tenure, I think.
Well, it's not like floods are a foreign concept in this area either, so.
Although our community buildings aren't built right in the middle of a river either.
We're, we're a different situation than what they are. You know, there still exists issues, you was talking about EMP and some of those.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, that, that's...
Could occur, tornadoes.
Well, with that said, I'll get more information from Rebecca and, uh, we'll go from act accordingly. Any other reports on committee meetings? Round two of citizen concerns.
In case you hadn't noticed, Supervisor Taylor, difficult time joining this. I assume his question would be the same as Supervisor Brown's, was at one point his, uh, if there is any objection, if he would be allowed to be recorded as an advocate of those agenda items that he wasn't able to voice his vote on.
I have no objection.
That would be appreciated. That would be appreciated.
And I have no objection as long as he wanted to vote yes on everything.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you. Board concerns. I'm waiting to hear back from a couple of towns on our future town hall for the rural areas, for those interested, so I'll be back in touch with those directly. We are adjourned.